It's on the same street. It's behind it. It's firm.
Nobody's gonna see it anyway.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call to order this special meeting of the Roscoe Village Board. Let's stand. Pledge allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in his soul, with liberty and justice for all. I'll just ask each of you to announce that you're present and I will then ask our guests to, for the record, announce themselves as well. So, present this evening.
Mike Roy here.
Sue Patty.
Stacy Mallico.
Carol Gustafson.
Joe Kerlinkus.
Justin Black.
Hi guys, I'm Mike Sam.
And with us tonight are representatives of Bear Graham, Annie Webb.
Seth Brunelwalt.
Tyler Nelson.
Brandon Boggs.
Thank you. Where to begin? Tell us what's on the share and then we'll turn it over to questions from the trustees.
So, I'm Seth Brunelwalt of Bear Graham, principal in our Rockford office.
Yeah, Tyler Nelson, I'm a senior project manager in Bear Graham's Rockford office.
Brandon Boggs, you guys are onsite engineers.
We just prepared a really brief presentation. We'd like to keep, keep it relatively short so that we have time to interact with you guys, answer any questions, maybe you have, kind of have some dialogue back and forth, so. Here, we've just got a really brief presentation. You want to go to the next slide for me, Joe? We're here tonight to present our SOQ for the general services for the village of Roscoe. And just starting off here, wanted to introduce the team that we presented in our SOQ. Obviously, you guys are very familiar with Brandon and we're presenting him as the onsite engineer to provide the general services that we have provided for the last sixteen years. He would continue to serve in that role. One of the things that we heard from the village was that you were looking for some additional support from our office, so we're also presenting Tyler, who's here as well, senior project manager, to kind of assist with those projects that we complete that are outside the scope of the general engineering services. But we feel like it's very important to have, have someone like Tyler, who is a PE, to be able to complete those services, whether it be development reviews, capital projects, planning. But Tyler leads a lot of the staff in the Rockford office, so he's able to really tap into the resources that we have there. So, we're happy to have them. Really quickly, this is just a background on Bear Graham. You can see that we're across three, three states here and we've been on the sweet hot firm list for the last ten years. We're top engineering, red engineering news record design firm. In 2024, we're top five hundred firm for the last three years and we've been around for more than fifty years. We have two hundred and fifty employees and we're in thirteen different locations. There's a list of services, obviously been with the village for the last sixteen plus years. And we have a variety of services beyond what we can provide on the municipal side, which you've seen, whether that be wastewater treatment, drinking water treatment, bridges, funding, landscape, parks and rec, transportation, ground field, construction management and much more. We, you know, structural engineering isn't on the list. We're able to do that, too. We pride ourselves by trying to be a one-stop shop, so pretty much anything that comes, comes to us that's related to infrastructure improvements, we're typically able to handle with having two hundred and fifty plus employees and also being connected to other sister firms across the nation now. There really is not too many projects that come to us that we can't find somebody who specializes it, specializes in it, if we can't do it here in Rockford. Just wanted to list some of our local communities that we serve, so you can see the connectivity we have in this region. You can see that there's small and large, right? We've got, we, we serve Rockford, Chesney Park, Loves Park, Winnebago, Durant, South Beloit, Pecatonica, German Valley, Byron, Freeport. So, the, the sizes of those communities range from five hundred people in, in German Valley to a hundred and fifty thousand people in Rockford. And we take care of, we, we take care of everybody with the same level of service. It's really important to us to continue to serve the small communities. That's how we were, whereas we look to provide that small firm feel with big firm capabilities. And so, there's really not a community that we feel like we can't bring, you know, quality service to. Another really important thing, it's okay, is that we, we also do a lot of work for North Park Public Water District, who serves the village of Roscoe in addition to Four Rivers and Winnebago County Highway Department. We have contracts with them for design projects and it makes it really, really great when we are serving these communities to have that connectivity, to be able to know who to work with and, and work through issues that may come up with projects that are related to the village of Roscoe. Couple of the main three things that you'll see in our SOQ that we submitted. One of the important things that we like to do for communities is make sure that we're providing services that are economically responsible. When, when completing general services, we believe that a lot of the services that are needed on a daily basis don't require a professional engineer to have to be in place. It, it keeps costs in check for the communities, but then also having the staff to kind of back up with a PE license or the technical knowledge to handle the tougher stuff is, you know, it's a, a good way for us to be cost-effective for you guys. We have, again, two hundred and fifty professionals within our firm and then we have access to national resources as well. One thing that we heard from you guys is, and, and we feel like we can do a really good job of making sure that we're in tune with your needs, is we'd like to propose as part of our SOQ that we have more, some more regular check-ins, just to make sure that we're really satisfying the needs of the village, whether that, you know, we'd like to have quarterly meetings, if that means just a staff meeting, or maybe even a presentation to the board to just kind of update you guys on what we're working on and, and the status of things. And if there's, if there are any problems, then we can, you know, address those timely and, and not get into a situation where maybe you guys are dissatisfied with something that we're doing. We can pivot and, and really meet your needs well. Again, you'll see in the SOQ packet that we try, try to be as flexible as possible with our, our fee structures. We presented three different fee options within the SOQ. The first one is what you're probably most familiar with right now, which is a, a joint agreement with the city of South Beloit, where essentially we are providing an average hourly rate of about seventy dollars, a little bit more per hour. But we split that between two days being provided to the city of South Beloit and three days being provided to the village of Roscoe. Really, it's, it's a good way to provide some savings to the village based on your actual needs. However, option two, we put out there as well, in the event that you believe more services are needed for your general services, where you could have five days. So, you can see same average hourly chargeout rate and all of the total costs being a little bit different there with the, being a hundred and forty-six thousand instead of the eighty-seven thousand. That's simply related to the two additional days that you wouldn't be splitting with South Beloit. In order to be, you know, add some more flexibility, we also have the option to have a, a higher hourly chargeout rate, but be completely on a as-needed, as-requested basis. So, if you decide that you need somebody onsite for thirty hours a week for the first three months of the year, we can do that. And then after that, you want to, you know, slow it down to ten hours a week, we can do that. So, we, we just wanted to give the most flexibility to you guys to serve what you, what you believe to be the needs of the village. I believe that's the last slide. So, from there, we just wanted to kind of open the floor, allow you guys to ask us any questions that you may have. We'll do our best to, to answer them and, yeah.
I guess I'll kick it off. I thank you guys for coming out. It's a lot to us, it's trustees here from you guys directly. So, I do like what we brought up, Seth, this guy is. Quarterly meetings for checking in with that's been feeling the concerns was, you know, quite, I'm just quite honest, you know, Bear Graham, maybe this, maybe this trustee is they don't, we're getting everything from you guys or we're sort of like on the back burner. I guess everybody wants to feel important, don't they? Might feel like we're the most important village, but I think that's a great idea. Can you expand more on like what you guys, because I think it's good to be proactive, right? It's good to be proactive and actually check in with the village administrator and the, and the president as to, as to what you think. So, what would you think that would look like? Little jackets.
So, we could really tailor that to whatever you guys would prefer. One way that we, that we do this in other communities is that we put together a quarterly report, kind of a synopsis of each project where things sit, so that you guys can really see a holistic view of, okay, so where does the residential streets program sit? Where does the MFT program sit? What kind of developments are we, are we, are we doing and how close are those to being approved or, you know, what maybe is missing? So, we, we provide that in a document, document, document form. And, and then also, we think that there's some value in, in just having an open dialogue meeting. That way, there's a, an opportunity for, you know, let's say that maybe you're not feeling as important as you, as you should be. We can talk about maybe some where, where you're not feeling that and, and come up with some different ways to address that and, and pivot in a different direction to make sure that we're really serving you guys well.
Appreciate that. I think it's, again, I think it's good to be proactive and it's good to, you know, reach out to us. I guess my other question was on the split with South Beloit. So, from what I understand, you guys are at cost at seventy-five dollars. Is that like what I understand? So, because you guys came in at the least amount. So, the option of potentially going to a different variation of that, can you do that if, can you vary? I guess what you said in the agreement, I guess it's, it is what it is, right? Or, you know, the option you're talking about before, if we want to have it more like on a retainer type thing. Is that something that you can vacillate in between or no?
So, the way that we're able to do the at-cost, which I failed to mention, that's something that we've actually done for the last sixteen years, is we've provided our, our general services to the village of Roscoe at cost. And the way, the reason why we do that is it's a, it's an opportunity for us to serve you guys, but then also get an opportunity to work on your other projects that you have, whether, whether that be the residential streets or your MFT or your future capital improvement roadway projects. But the reason why we're able to do that at cost is because we're, whether it be with South Beloit, you guys do three days and they do two, or you elect to do five days, by having our staff present here and they're office here and they're always busy working on your projects, that allows us to provide it at cost. Now, if we're on retainer and you elect to only use five hours a week or ten hours a week, that utilization, our staff is not consistent. And so, that's why we, in that third option, why you see the elevated, you know, hourly rate. That answer your question?
As, as far as your grant writing goes, as a trustee here, I hope that we're throwing too many projects out to whoever the, the engineering firm is. I like projects. I'm always interested in what's available out there. Are, are you guys looking for things constantly? Are you, I guess, someone else look here? Are you guys keeping an eye out for us as to you, as what's available out there? Do you guys have a better pipeline or a good pipeline to see?
Yeah, so I think there's two things that I want to head on that question, actually. So, we do, we have a grant department. We have people who are just consistently, just strictly involved with identifying funding opportunities and then applying projects to those. We've been very successful in landing money for our, the municipalities that we serve. I know that, I, I want to say, gosh, I shouldn't say a number, but it's in the, it's in the seven or the nine figures as far as the amount of funding that we've helped our community serve within the, or secure, I should say, within the last probably three years. With that said, you know, one thing that we think would be a really good idea for the village of Roscoe and, and that would help us help identify funding opportunities for you is to get a really good capital improvement plan in place, so that we really know what your projects are, because that helps us identify funding opportunities and tie them to an actual project. What's difficult when you're dealing with funding is to say, oh, there's this, this grant opportunity over here. Well, let's find a project and, and make a project happen really quickly, but is that really a priority for Roscoe, right? So, we, we want to know what, what your priority list of projects are, so that we can kind of tactically apply funding opportunities to those projects. So, we think it would be a really good idea, you know, to consider putting together a capital improvement plan. So, then we can, as we are getting the, those NOFOs, notice of funding opportunities, to see, okay, yeah, this one, this one could apply to this path project that Roscoe wants to advance. We'll take this to Roscoe and see if they do actually want to try and secure that funding. And you may say, no, that, that's brilliant. That's something that we're, we're not interested in moving right now. That's kind of, you know, seven years down the road and we don't want to do that. You may say, yeah, let's go for it. Let's push it up in the capital improvement plan. Maybe we slide these couple of projects back. So, I think by having that, that would also help our, our grant department be able to serve you guys well.
We have often talked about doing this, a new strategic plan and we haven't done it yet. And I believe that's kind of what you're talking about. So, you've been contacted just periodically, hit or miss for grant writing. Am I correct?
Yeah, so that's something that Joe and Carol often send me funding opportunities. Obviously, I have a, a list of projects that staff has in mind, maybe not projects that have been discussed at a board level to have a consensus of the board and have voted on, you know, action plan. But it's usually Joe, Carol, and then obviously our team keeps an eye out on, on the projects that we are actively working on, like our, you know, Love Road, Willowbrook Road, Main Street reconstruction projects. Projects that we know we're searching, some of the more illustrious projects. I think that mainly falls on me in the day-to-day position as well as Joe and Carol.
What would a capital plan look like, that, that partnership or to put that together, what, what are we kind of, what would your thoughts be or vision for that be?
So, it has to be partnership, right? It, it has to be, we can, we can identify areas where we believe that infrastructure improvements would make sense for the village, but it has to be a matter of, you know, you as the board and, and your staff to really get on board with what that plan looks like. So, what we typically like to do with capital improvement plan developments, and that's, that's actually another service that we, we like to do at a kind of a discounted rate, because again, it's putting together that plan is, is extremely important and it's not necessarily something that we look at as a profitability thing. It's more of a, hey, let's get this in place so that we try and get more done for the community. But we do have to have those, those, the, the, they would be sit-down meetings to really go through the needs in your guys' mind for what the village wants to pursue. And then from there, right, then we put together a narrative and say, this is what we're going to do. Here's an estimate of cost, high level. And then here may be some funding opportunities that we can, you know, existing funding sources that you may have that we could apply to it, maybe what your local match you would look, you know, like to see. And here's some potential programs that are out there right now. Obviously, that changes based on, you know, different administrations that are in place, whether it be at the state or federal levels. But being able to put that all in a, in a document and then phase that out by year, based on your, your budget, we, it would all be kind of formalized and, and placed on your websites for, for everyone to see.
So, if we presented this stuff to you, you tell us what was realistic, what isn't realistic, you know? I want fifty-foot golden arches. You guys are going to come back and say, you don't have the land, you don't have, so, I mean, that's, you would be doing that kind of back and forth.
Yeah, of course.
Our plan would be realistic, I guess. I don't, I know we've put money in a couple of different areas, like Main Street and Love Road and we've always had the feeling that those were good projects moving forward, but now we hear that maybe that was pie in the sky kind of stuff, so.
Hey, if I can speak to that, before I came to Bear Graham, I did ten years in the public sector and capital planning was one of the core tasks I completed. And, you know, that I think the, the best basis for a realistic capital plan is a revenue assumption in the front terms of, you know, what the anticipated revenues are. Then, a- as Seth alluded to, having, you know, realistic funding sources for each project and kind of, you know, categorizing them by, you know, pedestrian improvements, roadway improvements, maybe bridge improvements, maybe park and rec improvements. But you're starting from that revenue pie and then kind of dovetailing from there in terms of what you're going to be seeking grant funding for, what your field tax funding is going for, what your, you know, your, your general fund revenue is going towards. And then that really allows you to forecast out over those five years and be able to see, as, as Seth alluded to, you know, we get a notice of, of a grant. Let's plug this project that was three years down the road and let's bring it into the present because we have an opportunity now. But you're right, that, that they have to be based on some realism in terms of, you know, cost estimating. But, you know, if you do that on like a five-year horizon, but then update it every year, you can kind of respond to where costs may be.
That was never done.
The, the nice thing I like about those, too, is I mean, if you can make them available on the website and then, you know, so that's, see where, what's planning on being done.
Yeah, and there's a, there, to your point, Stacy, the, you know, there's a decent amount of, of sculpting that has to go into the plan, right? At the end of the day, it's just a plan, but let's be realistic and, and identify here are the, the main things that you want to achieve in this project. And that way, it's, it's pretty evident of what the goals are and that way you don't end up saying, hey, let's push this project forward and it all of a sudden grows, you know, by five times, because we never really thought about what we truly want to do or accomplish here. We put enough thought into it that it's a good solid plan and we've been, put enough contingency into, you know, maybe some unexpected costs or identified the fact that, hey, we don't really have the property for this. We should, you know, let's plug in a, an amount to secure some property in the future, build that into the plan. And then that's also goes into, you know, the, as you guys have opportunities to secure land, you can say, hey, this, this would really fit this project. We could put this here.
Do you know your costs on capital improvement planning? Do you know what it would cost us, I guess, to work with you on that? Off the top of your head, I guess, since you don't have it.
Yeah, so I would say, you know, and don't hold me to it. It would be a matter of, you know, because it, it would be a matter of what kind of depth you're looking for. We could probably bring some different examples to you and see, you know, how, how, how far into it. But let's just, you know, let's just, let's just say, you know, you're probably in the, you know, thirty to thirty-five thousand dollar range to get a plan together. It could be less. Depending if you want to keep it a little bit more bare bones and, and, and flexible, you can do that. It, it's really just a matter about the level of detail, how many projects you really, really want to, you know, look at.
What, how many, what would you look, I'm sorry? What types of projects do you handle in that sense? Just like everything parks?
Yeah.
It's everything that builds.
Yeah, municipal facilities, you know, let's say you've set, you, I know you don't need it, but you know, say the, needed the new police department building, right? You could, you could build something like that and you could, you know, a park, a, a recreational path. If it's an economic development driver, you know, if it's a, a roadway improvement, a reconstruction or a pedestrian bridge or those types, really, really anything. It's, it's a matter of, it's a plan that's not just necessarily based on strictly civil projects. Because there's going to be components and, and we also, we're very connected with the architects in the region, too, so they can help us with, let's say you decide you want to put up a municipal building, you know, helping maybe get some ballpark costing from, from our colleagues in the architectural world to tie some realistic costs and scope in there. We can bring some of those partners into the fold, too.
Thank you.
How far out of a plan, thinking two years, three years, five years? What, what is, is there like an average or?
Five years, it's pretty typical. Seth gives you some short-term goals, but that's longer-range goals as well. And if you project that much further than that, it's kind of a question of what revenues might do. You know, grant opportunities, it might be. That's usually, if you look around on like the City of Rockford's website and their CIP is very prominently posted, that they typically project out five years. That's just a pretty common timeframe.
Yeah, I would say it's probably, you know, five years for the, the capital improvement plan. And you may elect to, to say, hey, we want to look at a long, long-range plan, too, and, and keep those projects as more of a skeleton basis of, these are some things maybe you want to do in the next ten years and, and look at that. But really, your capital improvement plan is kind of at shorter term.
Are there any projects we're currently doing that you guys think we should have done?
No, no, I, I, I don't think so. I mean, I do, I do think that, you know, there's, you know, if you look at those, at the main Love and Willowbrook projects, I think those are all really good economic driver projects. I, I do think that it probably makes sense to maybe start looking at, instead of trying, I think the original intent of previous administration was to try and bite off the entire thing. I think it makes sense to maybe think about phasing and, and what makes the most sense to do. Maybe we just do this part. I mean, that, obviously, it's not how it was designed or the original intent, but I think that is something that could help those projects still be advanced. So, no, I, I guess my answer is I, I don't, I don't think that those are bad projects to, to have pushed forward. Just, it may just look different in order to get something done in the short run without major funding being provided by the state.
Which is what drove some of that. There was a lot of belief that there was other things coming. Hope, yes.
At, at, if I recall.
Futuristic endeavors.
You, you said something before the vote was, you know, it's, it's kind of like a dartboard and, and you're hoping that you throw the, the dart and it, and it sticks us something. I have a question that's totally unrelated, but I don't think I was aware that you helped with the OSLID grant.
Yeah, we, so I believe previous staff had done, you know, a large majority of it, but we did also, we did help with, you know, the development of the, the scope and some of the exhibits and things like that. We've been very successful in the OSLID process and securing money. I think we just got four, four new grants this year for municipalities. So, we really know what IDNR is looking for when we make those applications. So, yeah, we, we were a part of the OSLID grant selection for the village.
I just have one last question. I think if you missed, I'm, it's probably know we've, I'm about making sure we have open and honest, transparent communication. Think you have to have that before you have anything else, right? I mean, that, that really, you get the best qualifications, we can have the best, you know, best of everything, but if we're not able to communicate with each other. So, what I, I want to hear a little more about is, um, especially Tyler coming in and working with Brandon in certain areas, what that would look like, how that communication flow would go to, to Joe and to Carol filtered out to the board. I mean, I, I really, really do like the quarterly maybe aspects of that, but I just want to hear a little bit more about that from you and Brandon, too.
Yeah, sure. So, obviously Brandon would still be the main point of contact for the day-to-day of interactions in the village, where my role would come in and Brandon and I are talking, talk about it every day. I'm talking to him more than my wife some days, but where I would kind of step in, it's like more of the, the, the project outside the day-to-day scope. You know, he's always tagging me in with questions he may have that, you know, I can help him with the day-to-day doings. But then, you know, any sort of capital project or anything that we have a separate.
Uh, doings, but then, you know, any sort of capital project or anything that we have a separate agreement for. You know, my, myself and our team in the Rockford office would take the lead on that, so that doesn't burden Brandon with further. Um, tasks, so he can continue to focus on the day-to-day, the important day-to-day aspects of his role, uh. You know, i- in, in terms of how the quarterly meetings work, you know, I would envision that, you know, Brandon would still be here in those board meeting, but that I would come. To these, whatever they, we determine they'd be, if they're quarterly, if they're monthly, or, or whatever iteration, um. The board of the village decides that I would be there and be able to present on status of everything else that we're talking about, you know. Brandon would still be that point of contact for the other items, but then I can join the board meetings those nights and give updates so that. The communication is pretty seamless between each of us.
Yeah, and as far as communication up through Tyler too, um, the, the idea would be, is anything that is one of those. Capital or outside projects, uh, he would be the direct conduit, you know, as, as Joe needs something, he, he knows. Okay, this isn't, this isn't our outsourcing agreement, I'm gonna go to Tyler and, and Tyler can have direct dialogue with Joe, there's no laps in. In, uh, understanding or anything like that, um, he knows that if he needs something that's related to a project, he can go to Tyler and again, get the answers immediately, and if. If Tyler has to come to a, a, a board meeting to talk about that project, um, you know, he can, he can be there to do that. So the connectivity would be there with the board, he's, he's basically, um, the, the difference here from what you guys maybe have seen in the past is that you had kind of the one point of contact through Brandon. Here we're proposing to actually have two and really break off the general services separate from the capital. Does that answer your question?
Is there anything we're not doing that you guys feel is maybe odd, or where do you work with a lot of other municipalities? We don't know what we don't know, obviously, so is there anything we're not asking for or anything we're not?
I think you're asking, I, I, I think we talked about probably what, what we're not doing in the capital planning. Um, I really think that's a huge driver, um, that can help us serve you better. Um, so that, that's really the main thing that I think isn't, um, being done that I think would really add. But other than that, I mean, you, you, Joe's done a, a, a good job of, you know, really kind of taking over those, uh, the development. Aspects of things, making sure that, you know, there's, um, reimbursements and things like that from the development. Folks, we, we do really work hard at, uh, being responsive too, and I think this will, this arrangement would only help. At the end of the day, um, our response time is reflective on the, the development abilities of your community, and so if we're taking. You know, four months to, or sorry, four weeks to review a submittal and get, and get responses back. That slows development for your community, and we understand that that has implications with tax standpoint, attracting businesses as a whole, and so we, we. We really prioritize those reviews, and I think this is only going to kind of accentuate that by having dedicated staff separate from Brandon. To make sure that we're responsive there. Um, I. I don't think that there's really anything else other than that that you're necessarily missing.
My last thing is that, uh, we plan out a lot of projects, but it seems like at the end of the year we only get through. I'm gonna say a handful, but we're lucky to get through two or three, it seems like sometimes. Are you guys able to handle, and I, I know the answer could be yes, but. Why aren't we getting all those projects done? Is it, is it us not getting to you guys? Is it you guys not getting the information from us or back to us? I mean, why can't we kick these projects off and just? Get them all going, yeah, I mean, January one, we approve a budget, we have all these projects. Can we just say go and you guys run with it, or where's the miss been?
The miss is in the planning, the miss, um, by, you know, it's very difficult when, um, and, and that's not necessarily a, a staffing. Um, you know, issue, it's more of a, just a holistic planning book, right? So. If, if we know what's coming in the next year, and we can start talking about that in September and the year before, and we can start. You know, picking up the topographic survey and working on the design over the winters that we can put that project out for bid in March or April. That makes things a lot, you know, a lot better as far as being able to really execute, um. You know, what you're looking to do, it's, it becomes very difficult, and, and to be fair, a lot of the communities that we work with. Um, you know, they come to us in March and say, hey, we have this awesome idea. Um, can, can you get it done? And we, we typically, we work to try to get that done, but it becomes much harder, right? We're talking about. You know, developing a scope in March, and by the time it goes to the board and gets approved, and then we actually get a contract in place, and we get the design and the permitting. Permitting's huge, right? So, you know, getting, getting a leg up and, and being paired to handle permitting and give, give, you know. IDOT or IAPA adequate, you know, time to complete the review, um, is, is really important, because a lot of times that permitting will hold things up. For example, IDNR, uh, right now, if you are going to put a, a bridge in or a box culvert, you might as well plan on nine to twelve months for permit review. Well, that makes it pretty hard for us to execute a project when we do the design, takes, maybe it takes us six, six months to do the design. And we're ready to go, but then you submit for permit and it takes nine to twelve months. So by having that, you know, that forethought about this is what we wanna do in this year, we can really say, hey. You wanna, you know, put this bridge in, we should get started on that now, instead of, you know, that later.
Like Love Road.
Yeah, Love Road, it was a perfect example, I think, I mean, obviously that, that was, is a currently an unfunded project, right? But if you remember the IDNR review process for the box culvert, I think that was ten months. Yeah.
Well, I got out of all of that, it was very nice for you to say, uh, our capital plan sucks.
So, there you go.
And then you know, we get that together and these guys can work faster. I'm good.
I would just say, just to bounce off what you said, something that it did advocate for, and I think worked really well with our downtown experience. The year that we did those, because of the design, you know, you're, you're right out in spring.
And it's in your best interest. It's a great way to do it, and also, I mean, let's be honest, when contractors are. Over the winter months typically slower, right? So they have an opportunity to sharpen their pencils and look at those plans a little bit more and, and. Put together a better bid that maybe is a little bit more cost competitive for you guys, so your dollars go further. When you're pushing a project out for bid and, you know, late in, in the midst of construction, becomes a matter of, wow, let's just. We know that we're safe, let's just throw these numbers down, um, that's not a, you know, a dig on the, you know, contracting community by any means, it's just a matter of. You know, just business, right? They're, they're busy, they're focused on getting the project work that they have signed up already done, and so. You know, if we can push those things out in those off-peak months, that helps.
Mine first.
I have one question, all of that is, is when should we start preparing capital plan? But one.
Today.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you.
Just to confirm, you, you don't want us to stick around, we're more than happy to, uh.
We would like to pay representatives of the Baderman firm for hearing tonight. And I'll ask you to introduce yourselves to members of the board and begin your presentation, and then turn it over to the other questions.
Oh, thank you for having us here tonight, we appreciate it, my name is Frank McCurn, I'm the president of Baderman, and I'll let these gentlemen introduce themselves.
My name's Jason Nupui, I'm a design project manager, design project manager with Baderman.
And I'm Nicholas Jane, design project manager.
You are not professional speakers.
He stumbled over those words, right?
So, um, we, we don't have a PowerPoint, we thought we would just have a conversation, so hopefully that sets well with everyone. Um, I thought I would start by giving a little background on our company, um, believing in top, we've been around, this is our hundred and eighth year of being in business. Uh, there actually was a Mr. Baderman, uh, in nineteen seventeen that started out as a land surveyor and helper. And over time, one of his kids joined him and he became an engineer, uh, in just. Various different things they had done, always in the state line area, um, Rock County, Winnebago County, a little bit over in Green County, Wisconsin, Boone County. Um, there has not been a Baderman associated with the company since the mid nineteen seventies. But after that amount of time, it didn't make sense, I'm told, to change the company name, so it's been. RH Baderman, shorten up as Baderman ever since, um, by way of background, uh, the company. Uh, is, is always around twenty, twenty-five people, and in the last ten years or so, we've grown to about forty-five people. We have, uh, our main office in Beloit, we opened one over in Alcorn, which is north of Lake Geneva. Uh, and then we have an office in Jamesville, um, the office in, in, uh, Alcorn. Phone just kept ringing over that way, and we made some phone calls, and it turns out some surveyors had kind of aged out. Uh, so there was an opportunity, so that made sense, and, uh, the Jamesville office is, is a longer story that I won't bore you with, but there was a good reason why we did. Um, so we are, as you'll see in some of the documentation, we still have survey, and that's at the, the, the base of everything we do. Uh, we have about eight people in that department, and then we do quite a bit of construction management for municipal clients and certain clients. Wisconsin DOT primarily, we have about twelve people in that area. And then the rest are on the design side, which is what we're part of, either administration or design side. And that design can vary from municipal, county, state, uh, private development, school districts, it's, you know, any number of things. And I, I know in the pre, the document that we submitted, uh, we make a statement that, uh, we haven't done a lot of private sector work in your community. But we will commit to not do any in your community to avoid any appearance of a conflict. Um, so that's kind of the company in, in a nutshell, my experience, uh, I've been with the company. Twenty-eight years, I think, um, grew up in the Beloit area, um, got out of school. Left my hometown, married, viewed mirror, thought I would never be back, and well, turns out my hometown wasn't so bad after all, because that's where family was and. You know, got married, raised a family, which was very awful, uh, my, my background is mostly in municipal work, um. Uh, redoing streets, extending sewer and water, a little bit of wastewater treatment plant work, but that's been so long, I wouldn't feel comfortable doing, doing that anymore. Uh, but just the day-to-day workings of municipal engineering, uh, and then over time, it's evolved, we're in the president of the company. So I don't do a lot of day-to-day work anymore, um. I, I like to say that when I came back home, I was the smartest person when it came to drafting an auto cab. Now it's not even on my computer, so there's smarter people than me doing those things, so that's my background, and I'll turn it over for you guys to. Engineers are terrible about talking about themselves, so I, I may nudge you guys a little bit.
Uh, I'm Jason Nupui, um, I have been with Baderman for about three years, um, but in, uh, engineering for twenty-three years, um. My background is in municipal engineering, uh, my previous career was, um, at the city of Beloit as the engineer. Assistant city engineer for city of Beloit, uh, traffic engineer, and some experience with, uh, uh, SLATs and MPO planning, uh. So familiar with the municipal engineering, currently with Baderman, um, I work with a few different clients on the municipal side. Uh, is there municipal, uh, engineering contact? And then also work, uh, a lot with, uh, road design and DOT work. Um, so that's kind of my background, um, personally, I, I too, from the state line area, grew up in Beloit. I've been a resident of Illinois, just outside of the village limits here, uh, in the township for the past eight years. Uh, so that's a great community and happy to be involved with it.
Uh, I came to Baderman nearly five years ago. Prior to going to Baderman, I'd worked for seven years, uh, starting as a project engineer and working my way up to project manager. At a smaller environmental, ecological engineering firm in the Chicagoland area, um, my experience during that time was, um, a lot of. Mixture of private, uh, design and development, right, as well as municipal and local government design. Did a lot of work with forest preserve districts, um, also did a lot of, uh, municipal reviews, um, so. I did a lot of stormwater management reviews for local municipalities or, uh, some counties in the Chicago area. Say DOT transportation reviews, uh, things like that, kind of developed a niche into stormwater and flood plain management. Uh, during my time in the Chicago area, took that to Baderman, which I've continued as a project manager. Continue to be the same kind of, same kind of role, uh, with private center work as well as assistance in the municipal side as well. Yes, use. I am not originally from this area, I mean, actually from Indiana, but me and my wife are two, we live, we live in the old Sharon. So we're both, I, and it's. Moved up here and built a little bit.
I, I would, I would add that, um, thi- this was the team we're sending to you. Again, engineers aren't good at talking about themselves, Jason is very good with the public, he's had a lot of experience with the public. Dealing with public works and his capacity as assistant engineer for the city of Beloit. I, I've been to many, a public hearing and watched you handle yourself very well, because we know what a joy the public can be sometimes. Done very well with that, and Nick has established himself for us as a, a good technical reviewer. And in our capacity as municipal engineer, uh, oftentimes we have to review a subdivision or a site plan. Uh, very timely in those reviews, very clear, and what that communication is back and forth with. The developer or the developer's engineer, so that's, we thought it made sense to put this team together, present to you. Um, in our previous conversations, maybe just to kind of frame as we understand what the role is, um, so you're, you're looking for, um. You know, a company that you're comfortable with, and that's why we thought just having a conversation tonight, maybe. It's our style, we hope that you appreciate that, that's as, as our style, um, and you're, in addition to, you know. The, the typical engineering things, you're also looking for somebody that can be maybe an extension of your staff or work with your existing staff. On any number of things, and we feel comfortable in that role, we do that now, and it can be kind of a. Sometimes it's busy and we're needed a lot, sometimes we step away and we're not needed, uh, we're comfortable with that, just depending on what your needs are. We had a pretty good conversation, I think, with your, uh, director of public works. And understand, you know, what his needs are, and that he's still kind of maybe learning that position, his background is in parks, we have background in parks too. But yes, we felt very comfortable after the end of that initial conversation, so I guess if there's. If there's anything you guys wanna add, we'll open it up to what questions you guys might have.
Your day, you agree the day.
Yeah, so as the team sits here, I'd be the day-to-day contact, um, working with staff, you know, kind of the extension of the existing staff here. On the day-to-day operations, uh, Nick would be kind of the, the overseer, some site plan review. Uh, making sure that we have, so QC on some of our plan review, some of our design, and then, uh, Frank is administrator here.
Something isn't going right, you call me.
Well, I learned a lot about your presentation already, but that must be a really good engineering school. It looks like everybody.
Yeah.
Except for these two.
Except for us, yeah.
You guys are not.
No, no.
Well, I, my question was more so about communication, right? So really, to me, it's about, um, you know, yes, to do the work. Well, you know, to me, it's study work with which communication style, which communication, uh, we're working with, um, with. Joe, with Carol, with Troy, um, things go sideways, I mean, how do, how, how are you gonna be, uh, speaking with us? To me, it's more about like open communication, how do you, uh, I, how, what's your style, like, I guess.
Yeah, I'll, I'll maybe start it out, but really, it's, it's their responses, um. It's continuous, um, you know, or if we're not here and we understand that you're used to having somebody here on a regular basis. We're, we're okay with that, and I think in our, our submittal, we said, you know, let's, let's try it out for a few days a week for X amount of time. And then reevaluate if that's not enough or too much, but, uh, on a project basis, if there's a project, you usually have a. A kickoff meeting or an understanding or a scoping, hey. A kickoff meeting or an understanding or a scoping, hey, this is the funding source. This is the expectation of what's needed, what role do we play, what role do you guys play? Uh, try and get those established right upfront. Uh, get a rhythm to how often we want to meet, if it's a simple project, maybe you don't need to meet as much, if it's more complicated. You need to meet, meet more often. Uh, what is it a project that would require? Um, input from the community, and we were trying to establish that upfront, and in the end, we work for you, so we would defer to you on what you want. We won't be bashful if we think something doesn't make sense, but in the end, we will do what we are. Uh, because it is, you know, it's your project, you want to run it through you want, but maybe if you guys want to expand. In particular, uh, you know, a day-to-day thing or a, a site review.
Sure. Day-to-day, you know, obviously there's constant communication on a day-to-day basis, uh. You know, what's happening throughout the day, what the needs are, what's there looking for help from, and like I, I said or mentioned earlier, you know. I take this as we're an extension of the existing staff here, so. You know, we're gonna be able to respond, we're gonna be able to answer questions. On a project-by-project basis, you know, that's something that, as Frank mentioned, you kind of establish those boundaries or those roles at the beginning. And, you know, your communication can be as simple as a face-to-face conversation, you know, where. If we're not in the office, it could be a virtual meeting, or it's, you know, written communication that we have, and we have. Number of different, you know, forms and memos and standards that we typically use to communicate back and forth. You know, on projects that require public information, you know, or public involvement meetings. You know, those are pretty straightforward as far as what you're trying to communicate with the public, what you, what input you're trying to get back from them. Um, and as, you know, we mentioned, you know, we're working for the village of Roscoe, would be working for the village of Roscoe, so if there's. You know, guidance that we're taking, um, from either staff or the board on how a project needs to move forward. That will take that into consideration. Uh, in the, in the end, you know, we're all trying to get to the same goal, right? We're trying to get to what we consider a success, it's a successful, uh, project ending, so. Um, I don't know, you know, from Nick's standpoint, on a site plan review or an actual project review or permit review. You have kind of a.
Yeah, I mean, you know, oh, whole point, you know, one of our goals is try to get those reviews done in a. A timely fashion, accurate. We don't want, um, a similar standing. For a long time, we don't, we certainly don't want to be the holdup for any, uh, similar that's made or any developments. That's proposed, um, so we try, turn those around as possible, like something that's, um. The same from, um. It's middle, you know, we work with, you know, there, there's been times where we've worked with the submitting engineers and said, hell, what we're missing is this. Or they're going over specifically where, you know, things are deficient from the village organizations. Try to be as, um, helpful as possible to bring resolution, because in the end, you know, we want to see a development through. Because, you know, it's the village's best interest and it's our best interest. So just hope the communication for your house and village, um, as reviewers, and then as well to be speaking parties.
You know, it, sometimes it's not uncommon, and you could have half a dozen things that we're working on, whether it's site plan reviews, subdivision, or. One of your improvement projects, and every community is a little different, so over the years, we, um. Uh, we offer, not everyone. Says they want to do it this way, but what we can offer is. A summary of outstanding projects, that's an essence of a report that comes to you. At a frequency that you would dictate, whether it's weekly or once a month or whatever you need, that you can get in advance that. Here's, here's the project, here's the summary, who's the lead of the community, who's the lead for Baderman? What, what needs to get accomplished in the next reporting period? You find that, that can be helpful sometimes, just so you got, you know, as the public reaches out to you, hey, what's the status of that? Right here. Trying to keep it simple for the most part.
And with some of your projects with the, um, township of Roscoe. You folks have local relationships with county highway, Winnebago County this, Winnebago County that.
Yeah. And there's times when it's been more intense, and other times, not, we're not alive, but we're familiar with those relationships.
So the North Point one, and, and bless you for working with Mr. McCabot. You know what I'm talking about?
I was the lead on that from a consultant. But I survived.
It's a good point, though, because we, we have the ability to work with. Multiple different personalities, and as you know, some people come in and some teams come in, and, and they have, um. Maybe need a little help or guidance and, and to get them into what we consider would be a successful ending of the project. And I think we, we have a very good team that allows us to manage those personalities and. To make sure that we get what's in the best interest of both the client and the village.
Yes, I told you he's good with the public.
You guys have a grant pro, or a grant program, do you look for grants, do you?
Yeah, the, um, uh, the. We've written grants of any number of, of kinds, and they're, they're usually, uh, specific to a project. Actually, Jason and I are updating a park plan for one of our communities, because they, they would like to explore options. On grants and what's available, and the first thing you have to do is update your park plan, at least from, that's in the state of Wisconsin. Uh, it helps if you have, uh, what we call a capital improvement plan, or a, you know, a written document that. Kind of a wish list, and Jason has great experience from the city, because that, that's something they just, they update it every year. And, and I get it, smaller communities, it's not as easy to put those together, but that, that's something that we, you know, we'll keep pounding you to try and put. A version of it together, doesn't need to be perfect, it doesn't need to have every possible thing, but it's just. It's in the process, it's in a future year. So then, once we review that CIP list, we can start trying to marry up potential grant work with those. Um, it's a, it's an evolving. Process, um, with the administration changes at the national level. Then eventually to get up through a budget and that flows out into everything else. So we're members of bigger associations that help us do a lot of that research, so that. We think we're smart, but we're not as smart as some of these people, you know. American Council of Engineering Companies, things like that, so that's, we get nice summaries from that, um. And then it's all about relationships with those review agencies or those funding departments within the state. And I, I would say it's not uncommon to have to apply more than once for something, so don't, you know. Um, we'll try and manage expectations is the best way to say it, that if it's a worthy project and get funded eventually. And that can help understand when do you plug it into your budget.
I think we've all realized that capital plans are becoming more and more important, we've actually thought that for years, but it's. Becoming more and more obvious, what would your interaction be with us in developing that? And what would your proposed timeline for something like that?
Are, are you thinking of the timeframe to put it together, the timeframe of how many years out?
Uh, both, but mostly putting it together.
Yeah, typically, they're, they're, a capital improvement plan's somewhere in the. Three to six range, five's usually a good, five-year plan is usually a good average on it.
You mean outlook?
Outlook, yeah. Um, so, you know, for, for us, you know, there's a process that we like to go through, or that I like to go through is, you know. Kind of evaluate what the existing needs are, the existing system here, you, you communicate with the staff and what their, I'll call it wishlist is. There's some data that we can gather and pull in and, and get some background on. What we would do to, or what we would utilize to help prioritize some of the, the projects out there. And then you, you start putting some budgets together for that, you know, what, what the cost would be, an estimate on a cost would be, and then, then as Frank mentioned, once you get that. Capital improvement program put together, you start looking for funding or grant funding to that. Typically, um, you know, that's, that's. Depending on how, yeah, depending on how many projects and how far you, and, and detail you want to go with it, you know. I've put together programs that are very simple, you know, uh, a few projects, one or two projects each year. So it's a, a pretty easy document, I put together, you know, multimillion dollar. You know, projects and multiple, you know, twenty projects a year for different, uh. Municipalities, so yeah, it's, it's a six-month process in general, that's a good timeframe. Uh, by the time you gather all of your data, put together some type of document, send out there.
And you'd like to have it updated, completed, and in future years updated. Few months before you start your budget process, correct, typically, I mean, and to expand on that. I mean, there's a wish list in all your heads, let's get it on paper. And then, you know, probably do an evaluation of the streets, that's, that's the more straightforward one. I'm sure there's other things, whether sidewalks or parks, or you name it, there's a wish list that we have to get out of your heads on a piece of paper. Prioritize that, get it back to you, and then we'll watch the fireworks as everybody tries to get their project moved up first, and, uh, you know, just. The, the human nature of things, and maybe that involves a, a listing session with the public. It's up to you guys, uh. Maybe in the beginning, that, that may make sense, but again, it's up to you, but in future years, it, it should, I don't want to say it becomes routine. But it's, um, uh, much more streamlined. And, you know, you, even if you do one and it's not very good, at least you did one.
Are you familiar with any of the projects we're currently working on or looking at?
Uh, just briefly, I mentioned, uh, there's a, a parks project that has a grant associated with it. That, it was a parking lot and a path. Um, I know that the downtown here, you know, that corridor is being looked at. Um, so a few projects, you know, obviously, there's some road projects out there that are pending, um, but. Not as, I haven't gotten into the details as much, uh, just kind of an overview of what's out there.
What would you bring to us that maybe we haven't had to think, what? Service or what input or knowledge, what would you bring to the village that would be?
That's, that's kind of hard to answer, because I don't have a good idea of what your experience has been. I mean, I think. We know the firm we're working with, good company, we, we trade. Take turns reviewing each other's work in different communities, so, so we have a good working relationship with them, so. I guess, I, I don't know how to answer that question directly, because I don't have a sense of what you've been doing, but, um. I pride ourselves on common sense, I guess, um, and it's not, it's not.
What's your silver bullet for your other communities? Is there something that you guys really? This is our thing, we're really good, you know, we, communication or.
Yeah, I would see you do a lot with, you know, just. Yeah.
What's your specialty, I guess?
I would say, um. Getting to know you and understand what you're looking for, and if you're, I'm gonna try and put a silver bullet on it, um. We tend to stay with a community for a very long time. Um, I've been the engineer for a couple of communities that are transitioning. Um, have Jason take over more and more, uh, you know, over thirty years, uh, with some. Not over thirty, I've only done about twenty-eight, so, but, but a long time that my predecessors had, had worked with those communities. And it's, um. It's not that I'm trying not to answer it, but it, it's, it's routine. Conversation. Um, in addition to, you know, what are the projects you want to do next year? Um, it's understanding, um, what it is they're trying to do, there's, there's a long community that really. Is, you know, is desperately trying to, um. Get. Expand their community with housing or commercial development or something like that, okay. Well, you, you know, when's the last time you updated your long-range plan? So that needs to get done, whether you want us to do it or a dedicated planning firm. It's just talking through the situations, there's, there's one community that, um. Because they feel comfortable with us, so we talk about more than engineering, there's one community that, you know, this, this building downtown is such a. I saw that's an absentee landlord. Well, have you guys ever thought about buying it, and you control what it's gonna turn into? Well, how do we do that? I don't know, let's figure it out, you know, it's that sort of thing, so bringing in other state agencies and understanding what the, the possibilities are. Uh, block grant money, although you, you guys, I haven't done the, the data analysis, but. Your averaging could be too high for block grant funds, uh, but it's just, it, it's the whole community. It's not just our piece of it, we, we, if we're, if we're in it, we want to be involved in the whole thing. I don't know. Yeah, I, I guess, yeah.
The one-on-one personal.
Yeah, actually, we, we have the ability, because we are involved with and have the experience of being involved with different municipalities. We understand that each one is different, so I guess. If you're looking for the silver bullet, and maybe what Frank was, was trying to say there is that we have the ability to. Match our team and the needs of the community and, um, you know, to get to, to. Work with them to meet their needs.
I'm not gonna sit here and say that we can do everything for you, so we have relationships with other organizations or other consultant firms. That really have a specialty, that if we think it makes sense, we'll make that introduction up. I don't, I, I don't know what that would be, but usually there is something.
I think that's well said, I think, you know, I'm looking for just to be seamless, it's a team, right? I mean, that's the, they were building a team here, we want a team approach. Look at Jason and Nick, Nicholas, another part of our team as opposed to. Somebody that's a consultant coming out, um. Approachable, accessible by the trustees, by the, uh, village president, by the, the village minister. I think that's, that's personally what I'm looking for, and I think that's, that's because outside of that, once you're in that communication, you have that. To, to work together, and you, you know, everything else is.
Anyone, the other questions?
Very good, thank you guys.
Yeah, he. All enjoy the nice warm weather today.
Just, I have a figure I can give you that works, if you like it. Otherwise, I actually get through, so, which is the main, just the most we got, but let me start this up here and we will. Yes, yeah.
That's fine, that's fine, but you said you didn't.
Yeah, I made it this.
Is this also your presentation?
Yes. We are in Diane Hendrick's headquarters building.
That's probably the address.
Yeah. So it's. Do you know, um, where the under tech building is, or the under tech, or the Y? So we're on that same block as the Y, it's just, we're the one building in that sea parking lot.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
Hendricks up, upstairs, perhaps.
Yeah.
Thank you. I hope you've anybody introductions and any remarks that you wish or. Your presentation to the board and then they'll be free to ask questions. Starting with the president.
Obviously, my mom always said we cut my hands off. I couldn't talk, so I might move around a little bit. So really, I'd like to keep this pretty informal, um, trying to keep it short, get to a Q and A so we can have a conversation. But really have a, like, more of a conversation than a presentation. So if while we're, even while we're talking, if you got something. Catch our attention, wave us down, and we'll stop and talk about that at that time. I'm gonna do real quick. I'm gonna briefly introduce introduce the three of us, but we're gonna circle back. And a little bit to more detail on who we are. And I'm I'm Shane Larson, we're senior vice president of the company. I'm on our board of directors. And still pretty involved in project management on a day-to-day basis. I have with me Marcy Leach. Marcy runs our office in Beloit and also is very involved on a day-to-day basis with projects. And running our Beloit office and Andy Heftlin. And he's, uh, Andy's the brains of the outfit. He's our lead lead designer, um, uh, leads the design projects throughout Northern Illinois. Southern Wisconsin. So with that, I'm gonna real briefly. Real briefly talk about the firm, because I've absolutely not worked with you guys before, but we got seven offices. We got five in Illinois. Scattered out. We got an office in Hamble, Missouri, and we got our office in Beloit, Wisconsin. Why Beloit, Wisconsin and not Rockford, Illinois? Well, we have a lot of offices in Illinois. We do work for the DOT throughout the state. So the method to our madness was, let's open an office in Beloit, try to serve clients like Roscoe out of that office. But also set ourselves up to potentially do more work in Wisconsin, which we've never done before. So that's why Beloit. So company was established in nineteen forty-five, so this is our eightieth anniversary and we're super proud of that. I think the longevity and the corresponding stability brings a lot of confidence to our clients that are not going anywhere. Not selling out, been the same firm for eighty years, and so you're gonna get same firm you hired, whether it's five years from now or hopefully. Twenty-five years from now. Employees, we got a hundred and twenty-five employees scattered out across those seven offices. I feel like that's a really good number. With a hundred and twenty-five employees, we have a lot of resources and we're trusted by. Clients, the DOT and other clients throughout the state to do some of their most complex projects, but. We're only a hundred and twenty-five employees and so we're very, I would say, very nimble as a firm. That's why I'm standing here. I'm a senior vice president of the company and I'm still very involved in things. I think sometimes at bigger. Corporation firms, you don't necessarily get to see that. So I won't get into all that, but for the most part. What you guys need for services are the exact same services we provide to clients, you know, throughout our offices. So with that. I'm gonna move and I'm gonna let Marcy do a little more about herself.
So I'm Marcy Leach and I have a certified, I'm a certified floodplain manager. And I do have my engineer in training from years ago. Uh, most people ask me why I don't MIP. It's just never been one of those that I wanted to go after. I never wanted to be. More of a designer. I wanted to be more of a manager and an operations person than than engineering. I do know it. Still love it, which is perfect for me. Um, so my background is, I'm bringing in fourteen years of municipal experience. From working with the city of Rockford. I was the engineering operations manager. And these duties here are what I would be providing for the village of Roscoe. This is what I did. Um, for the city of Rock for for years and it's it's still kind of small compared to my three-page. Um, ordeal that I had with the city, but I spent almost fourteen years doing permit and plan reviews, plat reviews. Understand the Plats Act. I still provide some of that now as a consultant, helping out our various municipal clients. Um, I attended all of our board and committee meetings, ZBA. I was a representative for just about everything for the Public Works Department. Still plan to provide that to the village because of that experience. Policy ordinance, design standards, review and updates as needed. Um, I very much understand the different policies that go on and the ordinances that are needed, regulations out there. Uh, I came in when I was at the city, was a time for change for them. So I was there in oh-six through ten when they were, hey, we want to do outdoor design guidelines. I was the runner that wrote that. We needed a new streetlight policy. I wrote that. We were. Um, implemented a streetlight removal program. We needed to save some money. Oh-eight, everything kind of crashed. And we needed to find a way to save money. So I'm like, we have too many streetlights. They're right on top of each other. We worked to remove that. It actually made nationwide news when we did that. So I got a lot of experience doing different design standards, reading the ordinance, making changes, working with the zoning. Departments and building departments to make any changes. So I'm kind of hoping as if we can. Work with the village and I I know Joe there, he's been trying to make some changes and kind of working together. And maybe coming up some innovative ways to maybe help. Save the village some money, but also kind of continue to move forward. I've been doing a lot of grant applications and administration right now for clients. Probably in the last six months, I've done about. Fifteen grant applications. Shane's been keeping me pretty busy. At the time I turn around, he's giving me another one to write. Did a lot of, expect a lot of coordination with the village staff as we move forward. So I might be sitting here. Um, but I'd be working with other staff like Andy and his other people. Lot of public involvement meetings. Shane's gonna be probably at several of those. It's kind of his forte is one of these. Being a public involvement person. Utility coordination, I'm an underground person. I'm not as much of roadway. I'm an underground gal. Um, I spend a lot of time running and managing utilities and reviewing permits for that. Designing fiber, designing water mains, sanitary storm. That's, I'm more of that underground person, which I know. You don't have your own water here or anything, but fiber's a big deal coming in now to municipalities. And I've worked with a number of fiber companies along with working with AT&T for the last seven years on. Redesigning their fiber systems through towns.
How close are you to Comet?
Well, when I was at the city, when I, when I was at the city, I worked pretty close with Comet. Um, when I was doing design work for Everstream Fiber Company, that's mostly in Illinois, in this area, it's Illinois. And, um, I had to work with Comet a lot because we needed, we wanted to go on to the polls, so we had to work with Comet. And, um, it's a little difficult. Now, some of that staff, when I worked at my previous consulting company, that staff came with me. So I'm still providing that same utility locating. We can provide that service in our office. And with the survey, the equipment that we have, so. I still have that that same experience, the same people that came, so we could provide a lot of those different services. And I know fiber permitting in municipalities is a big thing right now. Capital program management assistance. I did some of that when I was at the city of Rockford. You'll see Andy's gonna be doing more of that, you know, with this expertise, which he'll go through. And stormwater management is kind of one of those things that is a kind of more dear to me. Um, city of Rockford had to go through. I went through an audit with the federal government and the state, got sued. And has a consent decree and I had to go through and kind of work through a whole new stormwater permit. And PDS, the MS four, Rockford is the only phase one. So we created new standard operating procedures for every aspect of stormwater you can think of for inspections. Maintenance, everything you can deal with industrial. So that even though with the phase two, which you have, you don't have to do as much, but slowly you're gonna have to provide more of that. Um, with your permits. I'm also in the, been working with Baton Rouge, Louisiana, doing the same thing, was asked to help out. Um, because of my experience with Rockford. So what, this is what I'm bringing. So we're looking at trying to do this blended approach. Because Andy will show you, he's not that, more that design construction. I did that in my younger years. But Andy's bringing that fresh look at all the projects, so we're hoping to kind of bring this. Blended approach where I might be the one that you'll see on a day-to-day basis, or at least in front of you. But Andy might be more of the day-to-day with the staff. Um, and then I will pop my head in and check things, but not necessarily bill you, but I want to check in with the staff as well, so. I know if there's questions and then you, but Andy kind of go through his experience here. But that's kind of what I'm planning on bringing in to the village.
All right, uh, my name's Andy, uh, bear with me, uh, public speaking is not my forte, so.
I remember I said he was the brains of the.
So let's see, uh, I started off my career. You know, on a survey crew outside the majority of the time, um, got myself into. Um, running construction projects as a resident engineer, started off with bridges. Uh, went off into Lake County to do underground. Uh, was the resident engineer for a twenty-two million dollar wastewater treatment plant, um, in the nearby municipality. Um, I think it's a lot of the experience, you know, out in the field. That's more boots in the ground if, uh. I guess if you look at a set of plans, it's easy to put line work on a set of plans, say, hey, go out and do this. But it doesn't necessarily mean that's the best way to go and construct something. There's issues that arise and it's. Trying to understand and. What am I trying to think of? It it's trying to foresee those issues, make sure we don't have them in the field because. Nobody wants to change order. Nobody wants to pay extra money on a project and. Whether it's me working on a project or somebody else working underneath me. I set myself to a high standard and everybody who works under me, you know, I said that too. Uh, we wanna provide the best product that we can for you guys, whether it's a project that we're designing. Or maybe you ask us to review somebody else's plans, like. Uh, at the end of the day, um. I just bring that real world, uh, aspect to the engineering side and. Um, I'll be here, you know, whenever you guys need me and look forward to potentially working with you guys.
I'm gonna break. I'm gonna give you a little bit. I think you guys have a, an important Main Street project that you would love to get done and. He's, uh, worked on, uh, recently completed a set of plans on a downtown reconstruction job in Ran Toole, Illinois. That, uh, is going out for bid actually this week and he's working on another downtown reconstruction job in Kiwanee, Illinois. Right now, so he's got that, he's got that background. But a little bit about myself, state agency coordinator. Maybe more important than I am, but, um, I I spent seventeen years working at the, uh, OY DOT. Out of their office in Peoria and you know why I think that's important? You guys know your, whether it's federal money or motor fuel tax money, you spend a lot of time coordinating with IDA on those kind of projects. I have a lot of experience over my thirty-two-year career, whether it was seventeen years at IDA or fifteen years on the private side. Most of, a lot of what I've done in my background, this federal and state funded projects where we have to get it through the DOT. And trust me when I tell you, if. If a firm's not used to that, that will chew you up. The DOT will chew you up and spit you out if you're not used to that. And that's something I think I'm very good at. We know the staff in Dixon. We work with them all the time, so. You know, if we're lucky enough and you get some federal money, we can help get those projects separate through. So, you know, my involvement will be on the periphery with these guys and and helping them as needed. And be here to help with public involvement, help with state agency coordination and get projects to the finish line.
Expand on, I mean, these projects, Grandville and Kiwanee. What, what do you, I, yeah, what are you guys doing downtown, uh, specifically like?
I will say, um, both Kiwanee and Ran Toole were very, you know, old downtown, a lot of ADA issues. Um, so, you know, some of them haven't been complete street reconstruction, so maybe just milling overlay in the streets. But then brand-new curb and gutter and everything back to the building fronts. And so, you know, just making it fully ADA compliant, streetscaping, you know, bringing in landscaping, decorative lighting. Um, those two projects themselves did not have bike trails on them, but we've had some recently where we are incorporating. A, a bike path into an ADA compliant sidewalk situation. And we just finished one in downtown Mulley where the construction just got done and it was a separated bike path. And then some landscaping and then your sidewalks up along the building to keep your pedestrians and your bicyclists away from each other. So, yeah, that's what those projects are. Sorry, I skipped right by Devon.
That's, that's okay.
Yeah.
He'll, he'll forgive you, I'm sure. Um, Devin, yes, that's my son. So when we submitted the, the SOQ originally, he's not in that because he had not accepted the offer yet. Um, he'd actually been back and forth between Fairgram and and Hutcheson. He'd spent, uh, two summers and a winter with Fairgram. And so while he was at Fairgram, he actually did work in Roscoe. And kind of helping out with the pavement condition index for the streets and the MFT program. So he is familiar with Roscoe already. He did sign on and so when we had our initial interview. Uh, we were able to talk about him because he did sign on and actually started working with us. So he's kind of working while he's at school, finishing up that last semester. But he's gonna be coming in and doing some of that construction management and inspection because he had been doing it for IDA and with Fairgram. Um, he can help out with permit reviews like right-ofways, stuff like that, and we'll start training him to understand a little bit more about some of that other permit stuff. Be doing project design, working with Andy. He's already started with that when he worked here with us over the winter. And he'll also help Andy with that capital program management as you guys are working through the budgets and priorities. And getting the, um, maps and plan sheets or what exhibits that ready to go. He's gonna be helping out with that.
I think just to expand on something Marcy said early on, I think that's why we showed you kind of a wide range and. Devon's the youngest and I'm the oldest in that group, but really providing you the right person for what you need. And that way we keep your cost, your engineering cost, that we don't. You know, we're not trying to whack the fly with a sledgehammer. We're hitting it with a fly swatter and, you know, that way you got the right. Person at the right hourly rate doing the right task. And so I think that's kind of why we wanted to show you that range of personnel.
And Shane and I are in those positions where we know most of our time anymore is providing guidance to everybody else. So that that guidance time doesn't, doesn't really get charged to our clients. So it'd be the same cases here is, as we start to transition, even though I might be the one to start off in front of you all. Um, and transition it to Andy, it's, I'm providing him guidance and I wouldn't be always charging that. So even when you might see two of us here in this office, you're not seeing my time on that. It's just, we're just trying to make sure we can provide you the right information. Right guts, and I can help train those at the same time. That should be training in all of this. Um, so Shane touched base on this a little bit, but these are municipal engineering services in the SOQ. Our submitter back, I think it's in your packet. We do have, it's in the other side if you're looking at it. So there's a couple of pages in there that actually list all of our municipalities and the different services we've been providing. So we wanted to make sure you knew that and this is what we're providing for them, plan to do the same thing for you.
Communication, uh, I think I've been doing this long enough to know that you can design the best project, maybe build the best project. If you don't communicate well throughout that process, it probably is not gonna end up being a total success. And so it's very important to us, you know, hey, you know, obviously we're starting with the the village. You know, the staff here, um, staff, Joseph, the rest of the public work staff and you all on the village board. And, you know, we're gonna tailor that to how you want to do it. I mean, we, we, we have not worked with you, so I'm not gonna stand here and claim to know exactly how you want to communicate. But I'll tell you how we do it in other communities. I mean, it's gonna be at village board meetings. It's gonna be at. You know, weekly staff meetings with the appropriate staff. It's gonna be emails. It's gonna be teams meetings. It's. I get more texts from clients than I could have ever imagined I would have gotten when I started my career. What are you gonna think? So text, phone calls, we're gonna communicate how the village wants to communicate. I think with the public and property owners and different organizations, yeah, we're gonna be here. I know that's important. You, I mean, we want to take the lead. Our goal is and, and I think we've done. Well on some of these downtown reconstruction jobs where, I mean, our staff, we're like the first line of defense. We're hoping that we're trusted by you to take those complaints and hopefully just be able to answer them from the public or questions. And and if we can't, I would say we want you to know what you need to know that could get you in trouble, right? So if we think. So if we think that that thing is gonna blow back or for whatever reason, then we want you involved. Otherwise, that's what you're paying us for. Take care of it. So, you know, we're gonna do that. Like Mercy said, with her background in the utility, um, she's got a big background in coordinate with utilities. And what we know is when you're doing projects, I'm not sure you could ever overcoordinate with utility companies because they can and will delay a project if you're not careful. And so we've learned with them, get with them early and stay with them throughout a project. So utilities and, you know, we wanna be friendly with developers and other people. We understand you guys want business, you want development here. So firm affair with them, you know, we don't want them to get away with just anything, but we also want Roscoe to be known as a a friendly town where it's also welcome. So, you know, we do that, and like you said, with state agencies, yeah, once again, I'm not sure you could overcoordinate with them. So we wanna make sure if you're given grant money and other things, that we can help shepherd that to the finish line for you. Grants, real quick, I'm gonna run through some grants. Uh, we've had a lot of experience. Mercy was talking about that, I believe. Um, Joseph, you mentioned maybe you guys submitted again for the ITEP grant. Um, so we have a ton of experience with that, you know, that ITEP program over the last ten years. We've helped communities um secure around thirty million dollars in funding. So, I mean, you know, that's important. A lot of that was downtown reconstruction and/or bike trails. One of those two types of projects, but safe routes to school, highway safety improvement, all federal money programs that we have a lot of experience, not only submitting and helping the community secure the grant, but also getting it through design all the way to it being built. So we have a lot of experience, not only getting the money, but making sure you're following the right process to spend the money properly. So different grant programs, I won't go through each one of those specifically. Sure, yeah. PCL, we've done a lot. As you know, in the last Capitol bill, um, the Capitol bill set aside a bunch of money, and they gave it to the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity to rebuild downtown uh and Main Streets. And I think we've working on five or six of those type projects in this last year. A bunch of them are, um, well, this one here, um, Dob and Bob in Illinois is out to, out to construction right now. And the other ones, I told you, Andy's one in Ranhtoe, it goes out for bid on Thursday, and he's working on one in Kiwanee. And that was all this, this grant program here at the top. And so we helped them submit grant applications, and they all received around three million dollars with no match required, which is always nice. And so we've producing some nice downtown street skate projects out of that. Think I'll end with Y S, oh, I'm gonna go through that. I think I told you, state core coordination, I think we excel at that. We don't shy away from it. We understand how important it is to make progress, success. You know, the various funding experience, whether that be your motor fuel tax money or federal money that comes in or I E P A money, they all have strings attached, right? And make no mistake, when someone gives you free money, there's always strings attached to that, and we understand that and help you get through that with the grants. And listen, deliver, cost-effective designs is that we, we're always gonna have an opinion on how we think it should be done, but we also understand that that's our opinion. I mean, we're gonna bring our, hopefully our expert opinion, but we're also gonna listen to you all, your community on what their ideas are, and then say, well, that's a great idea. There's no reason that can't be incorporated, or here's why we would do that. And timely response, like I told you, um, I always say to everybody, if if you shot me an email or a text or left me a voicemail, if you don't hear from me in twenty-four hours, you better call it in. So I find something wrong with me. And I, and I do believe that, and I, I do believe that's how we operate. Lastly, unsolicited initiative, what's that mean? Well, we've had a client recently tell us what they appreciate about working with Hutchison, that they don't have to tell us what to do. We're just gonna take care of it. Because if you had the time to do it all, then you would need us. And so that's why you hire a consultant, right, to just take care of stuff, take it off your plate. I think we excel at that. So with that,
Anything around Beloit that you could tell us that you've worked on recently or?
Well, I'll answer that. I think, no, well, no, and here's why. We just opened our office and yeah, man, we didn't even have the office space a year ago, but we hired Mercy a year ago. So our office here is new. Obviously, Mercy's not new to the area with working in Rockford, working for another engineering firm. Andy's not necessarily new, but Hutchison is.
I should actually add, we do a lot of work um for CCI.
There you go.
And
So, okay, yeah.
Right, so we, we're the engineers for the North Star campus. Up there, yeah, so we, we've done everything out there because we do have architects and structural engineers on staff too. So they've done a lot of that work for North Star. So we're, that's a continued client for us. We do have a construction job on the state highway two thirteen there right downtown Beloit, so that'll be starting here in May. So we'll do, doing that for that couple of blocks. So we're pretty happy to have to already get a construction job with the VisDive. So, but yeah, right now, most of our work's been on the private side, and a lot of it's been for CCI. But we're continuously putting proposals out, and we're just, it's still kind of a waiting game for that.
I mean, that's why it was very exciting for us. So, I mean, I know it's gonna sound patronizing, but I'm gonna say it anyway. Is that, you know, to be shortlisted and come do this, I mean, for us, we do this kind of work for municipalities throughout Illinois, but we've not done it in the Rockford area yet, and, you know, you guys are the type of clients, it's how we have successfully built six other offices throughout. And so for us, this was an exciting opportunity.
No, Shane, I appreciate you giving us sort of the structure and overview. I appreciate, I got a little bit of understanding. So from day-to-day operates, Marcy would be Marcy and I'm trying to figure out like, so my thought is, one, communications. You're correct. How do you communicate with, you work with? Be part of a team, integrating you as a team, right? So, you know, do you work for the village of Roscoe or do you work for? Um, so would it be working with um Marcy and Andy? Would you guys be ones at the village board meetings? What's dealing with uh with Troy and Joe and, um, just to me how that would work, what's that look like?
So, yes, it would be primarily Andy and I be doing that. And some of it's gonna be dependent on what your, your need is for that. Our attention is, my, my understanding was if your current engineer is there three days, three days a week. And so if you're looking to try to keep that same schedule, we can provide that. Um, and but be between Andy and I, there are gonna be times that maybe we've gotta switch back and forth a day or two here and there. Um, there may be times both of us would be in just because of what is going on on that particular day. Uh, as I've said before, we're not necessarily looking to charge all that. Maybe, you know, sometimes you just need both of us here just because of the day, but Andy's gonna primarily be doing a lot of like the probably the permit reviews, and I'd probably get him started with that. Help out, and then I'll be probably more of the interaction with the the board and with this, some of the other staff or providing guidance as needed with the public works director and things like that. It's gonna, it'll primarily be us. I mean, you won't see Devon in here unless he needs to help out with permits or he's just doing the construction inspection for jobs, but he'll be popping in and out, but not necessarily to be sitting here so much.
I think it's important to have that relationship around where, you know, like, you know, we're all part, we're all pulling, pulling all the same direction, you're right.
And we wanna make sure both of us are involved, just because if one of us is not around, you should be able to contact the other one and get the answer. We should be able to communicate even between the two of us to make sure we can provide you with whatever answer you need if the other's not around.
They kind of answered us.
Yeah. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Thank you. We appreciate this opportunity. Good luck with your decision, I know.
Good job.
Executive session.
So moved.
Second.
For the purposes of, I guess, testing, uh, testing the solvent, uh, solvent in place, exception, exception.
That's right on, and we don't get to be in.
Uh, all, well, we'll just go around and say yes.
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 I mentioned my office.
Almost. Okay, that, we're good.
All right, we can start again. Is there a motion to come back into open session? Someone?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, no action was taken in executive session. We have a motion to adjourn.
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.
We should ask the rest of the, let's see.
So, everybody had just their, about the same presentation, huh?
Absolutely.
Almost all done. Thank you.